Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Maxwell. I'm the Public Policy Manager at the Charles River Chamber. We're happy to bring to you a conversation with two city council candidates running for the Ward five seat in Newton. Today we hear from Gary Miller and Julie Irish, who will be on the ballot for the November fourth annual citywide election. As for the parameters, this will be a one hour debate. There will be no opening statement, but each candidate will have ninety seconds to complete a closing one. Other than this closing statement, we will not be using a timer, but I do ask that each candidate be respectful of each other's times. Keep their answers concise and focus on the questions asked. I also reserve the right to interrupt and probably will do so in the interest of time. Also, a recording of the debate will be available after the fact. Finally, I informed the candidates of the last question of today's debate, which is if you could time travel to any one day in world history just to observe, but not to change anything, which day would you choose? So let's get into it. To begin, I'm not sure that everyone here knows the both of you, so I'd like for you to introduce yourselves to the audience. What is your background in Newton and how did you find yourself running for office? Let's start with Gary on this one.
All right, thanks, Max. So I have been a resident of Newton Upper Falls for more than twenty-five years now. I'm, you know, I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine. This is the place where I bought my first house, my starter home. It's the place where I met my now husband and it's the place where I've come to view as my forever home. And the place where, you know, I've gotten involved in the community, so working on, you know, as a liaison committee person for the Northland project, working as a volunteer in various capacities and, you know, I really felt like, you know, early this year that it was time to take the service that I'm involved to kind of the next level and be a member of the city council where I feel like I can advocate and work on issues that are important to me.
Thank you, Gary. And Julie?
Yeah, I think you might have arrived around the same time. I lived in Upper Falls. We moved here. My husband and I moved here about twenty-six years ago and knew right away that this is, you know, a great community. I think our neighbors immediately, you know, felt made us feel at home. And I always said, this is where I'm probably going to retire for lots of reasons, but from starting off from, you know, once my, we had kids, I'm getting involved in the PTO at Countryside. And then from there, I really joined the Upper Falls Area Council. I learned about that once that was getting started and I've been on that for almost, I guess, ten years and now currently the president of the Upper Falls Area Council. And through that, you know, I've met a lot of people. We've advocated for a lot of the Upper Falls residents on various issues and got to know and a lot of community building and that's been really fun, really great. And, you know, again, through Newton serves and, you know, whatever it is, you know, I love Upper Falls. There's a lot of great things about it. And so I decided that this was, you know, I've had a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. I feel like I kind of know how the city works now from working with a lot of the departments that this would be the time to, you know, step up and had a lot of encouragement from friends and neighbors that, you know, might not throw your hat into the race for a city council. So looking forward to being a candidate. It's been fun.
Thank you. So now let's get into some of the issues. There's so much economic uncertainty right now for our small shops and restaurants. They're really feeling it the most. How would both of you help our restaurants and retailers, especially the ones you represent in Highlands, Wobbin, Upper Falls, to be successful in this uncertain time? How would you, how would you help them? And let's start with Julie on this one.
How would I help the restaurants in the local area?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I've talked to actually quite a few of them and it's really getting the support, you know, it's, it's one, it's costly to run a business, especially around a restaurant, the cost of food and staffing, to pay for staff and for the leasing. So I think whatever the city can do to support the small businesses. You know, they're here. We want to keep them here. I think that's really important. We don't want to make them move to, we don't want to burden them with any administrative things that make the neighboring towns more attractive because they could, they could find it, but I think it's here to keep them, keep they promote them as best we can. Link them to community events. I know in the Village Day that's coming up, we have Little Luke's and the Echo Bridge Restaurant and, you know, trying to promote them so local residents know about them, that they're part of the community. And I expect the same over in Wobbin in the Highlands to be able to promote the small businesses as best we can and feel like they are. They are part of our community, both the people, the owners, the workers. So that's, I think, probably, you know, just make them feel welcome and supported. You know, and reduce any sort of red tape that might come their way.
Thank you. And Gary, with all the economic uncertainty right now, how would you help our small shops?
So, first of all, I really feel for the small businesses, small restaurants that are really struggling right now with costs and, and you know, lack of, of business coming to their, their businesses and their establishments. I think one thing that's very concrete that we can do is, or a couple of things are, A, B, as a city councillor, someone who can help them navigate the system in at City Hall. I have heard from several businesses that I talked to that it's going to be a really difficult thing to do. It's unnecessary, complex, and sometimes they just don't feel like they're supported at City Hall, and so they need someone to help. So I'd like to be someone who businesses, restaurant owners can turn to, to help support our business. And then on the other hand, I think as a city, we need to really be very careful when adding new requirements on businesses there. I've had a couple of restaurant owners talk to me about something as simple as grease traps at their restaurants and how, you know, they're very conscientious about it and yet the city has layered on new requirements for them that, that they don't feel are necessary, that they do a good job. And why is the city asking them to contract that out? So, so really like taking a hard look at what the city is asking from our businesses and making sure that it's required.
Thank you. And to that point, even today, a local cafe in Upper Falls was, you know, served the notice that there was going to be more construction after a year-long construction period had ended. There's going to be maybe even a month more construction. How do you view your role as a city councillor in communicating to businesses and how can you, and how will you make businesses feel more heard within the city government? Let's start with Julie on this one.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, I'm very close to, this has been something that is very close to home, having a conversation with the owner who's, who didn't hear from the city until, I think, just this week that it's happening again. And I think, you know, for any, any of the things that we do, we still have to bring the businesses along. We're not working against them, we're working with them. And so communicating with them, I think that's the number one thing is the communication. Because last year, when Little Luke's was, had to close because of the construction, it was, if he had just known it was communicated ahead of time, he would have made plans to, you know, reduce staffing and not order the food. So it just comes down to a lot of communication. As a city councillor, that's the most important thing is communicating with, whether it's the businesses, the residents, because you can avoid so many things, miscommunication, and people start filling in the gaps, why it didn't happen, nor are you here. So it's really, it comes down to communication and that'd be like a number one priority, whether it's listening or communicating back to them is, I think the key thing of a city councillor is really communication.
And Gary, do you have a plan for how to communicate to businesses and how to make sure they're in the loop?
Well, I've, this is a Little Luke's situation is something that I think Julie and I have talked about at the area council on multiple occasions. We knew it was coming because the sidewalk outside there was, with the new sidewalk is, was, I still haven't gotten a good story on why that, why it was, why it's deteriorating. But, you know, I think the city councillor, especially the ward councillor, plays a critical role in, in closing that communication loop. You know, we had known for months now that this was coming. And yet somehow it seems like the city has not communicated effectively with the owner and manager of Little Luke's. And they also didn't do very well last year about doing that. And so, you know, I am going to echo Julie on this, like, we as a city councillor really play a critical role. We need to really hammer, or not hammer, but, but really work with the city staff to make sure that communication about these kinds of disruptions is clear and, and is done well ahead of time.
Thank you. On a similar note, and something that affects a lot of our small businesses, much is made about some, you know, city construction projects and walkability projects, the Newton Center Plaza, the Washington Street Road Diet, near Ward five or near Ward five, the Newton Highlands redesign. So, you know, there's a lot of competing interests for a street on the, space on the road, a space in the parking lot. How would you build consensus among businesses and residents for these projects? Or would you, or would you prefer the city not pursue them at all? Let's start with Gary here.
I think these projects are very important. The Washington Street Road Diet program is something we've been talking about for a long time. I think, you know, we have to make sure we stress on projects like that, that this is a pilot. We want to see how things go. And we'll make adjustments if we have to. And that this is not at all meant to burden businesses. It's meant to help them in many ways, right? So, you know, again, I think a lot of it comes down to communication and effective communication. And that's something, once again, the city council and city councillors can play an important role in doing that and really sort of, you know, addressing the concerns of businesses, making sure that it's communicated back to the city. And, you know, I think city communications are a big, big reason why I decided to run in the first place, that, that it's, it needs a big overhaul and, and, you know, the city council and city councillors.
And do you approve of those projects? Would you want to see those move forward if you were elected? The Plaza, the Road Diet?
I've been out of the Plaza, I've been out of the Plaza several, a bunch of times now. It's busy and I love to see that. I think we just saw a piece, I think it was in the Beacon about, you know, how that's been and how the businesses are starting to come around to thinking that, that it's actually beneficial and, you know, I, I would, I would echo some of what Mark Laredo said a few weeks ago about being concerned about the cost of that and if it was worth it, but and now that it's there, I think it's, I think it's good. In terms of the Washington Street Road Diet, I also support that. I think, I think it's important for road safety and biking and pedestrian safety, so.
Yeah, thank you. And Julie, how would you build consensus for these issues when there's only a limited amount of space and the city wants to pursue something?
Oh, well, I think it's where, wherever you're putting it, you have to get the feedback of the business owners and the residents. I mean, I think that was the, sort of the issue with the, the pilot in Newton Center was that the businesses didn't have a lot of input, maybe didn't know about it as much as they should have. And that just, you know, even if it's the most beautiful thing, it doesn't feel good because they weren't involved in the decision-making and they're the ones that are right there. And I think that's probably, you know, talk to the users or the people who experience it or who's there, it's, it's, they have such important, valid comments and thoughts about it because they're living it and they know what might compromise the foot traffic or the parking. They are the ones that know. And I think that's the most important thing is to talk to the business owners or residents who are there as well, but with most particular projects in the Newton Center pilot project, you know, I've been there. It's, I think it's a cool space. I've been there during the day, nuts, it wasn't as busy evenings. I'd like to see families there, you know, enjoying pizza, whether they could do that on the adjacent area. I don't know whether it was cost-wise, I don't know if it was justified. But in terms of the Washington Street Pilot, you know, a lot of comments on that. I have to kind of wait and see on that one. You know, I, I like the idea of pilots. I honestly do because you don't know until you try something and then you need to pivot and you find out what works and what doesn't work. And I think that's not always communicated as well as it could be that we're going to do this for a certain amount of time. We're going to learn from it. We may scrap the whole deal or we might go forward with it, but you have to get input at the beginning along, and it has to be considered valid. People complain or they don't like it, it's valid. They're the one experiencing it. People love it. You want to hear that too. So I think it's just really important to get the input from the, the beginning, the seeds of the idea along the way and, and then learn to pivot.
Yeah. Well, you're right that they're both pilots, but the, the Center Plaza pilot is ending. So are you still unsure if you would support continuing that or?
Yeah, I don't know. I would talk to the businesses. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that decision myself. I'd want to say, was this good? Would you have, did you have, did it yield more people hanging out, eating more, and more foot traffic, more, more business? And that's probably how I'd come to make my decision, you know, that for someone who lives across town.
Okay, so let's move on to housing, which is really the number one economic issue in our state, but especially here in Newton. Right now in Upper Falls, Northland is constructing its project on Needham Street. I'm sure everyone knows that. Did you vote for that project in the referendum? Let's start with Gary here.
Ah, so I did vote in favor of it in the referendum. I've always thought it was a, overall a good project, even if I had some issues with some details. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm currently serving as a member of the liaison, neighborhood liaison committee for Northland, so, you know, really representing the village as best I can as that project moves forward and, you know, I think we've provided some valuable feedback to Northland. For example, last fall when they came back with their new permit request, they presented to the liaison committee and I said, and they, they were eliminating the shuttle bus in that first iteration and I was not happy with that and I let them know. And I think fortunately the voices of the community were heard and my voice was heard. And we've got something back at least on the shuttle bus and, you know, I'm, I'm glad it's moving forward.
And Julie? Did you vote in favor of the project in the twenty, in the referendum?
Referendum? No, I did not. And I'm really sad that it had to go to referendum. That's, that's probably the biggest issue that I wish it didn't get to that point because that's not good for the city. That's not good for the community. Referendums rarely are because it's so divisive. But going back, I mean, it was the idea of having a mixed use development addition, there was a great addition to the community. We were welcoming that, someone who lives in Upper Falls. And I was concerned about the, the size of it, you know, eight hundred years, the biggest project in the history of Newton. And it still is. And then we knew there was something coming across the street, another maybe four hundred, so twelve, the idea of maybe at the time we didn't know, but there were a lot of units there. And as the community in Upper Falls, knowing it wasn't a transit-oriented development, it really wasn't TOD, there were concerns about traffic. There were, that was probably one of the issues, knowing that this is a
So you, so you stand by your vote all these years later?
Uh, yeah, I'm glad it's moving forward. Yeah, at this point, yeah. I think we got a better project. We advocated hard on behalf of the community, advocating to get a better project. And yeah, I think we, you know, the whole idea was to just hold the developers accountable in terms of traffic, traffic counts, parking, environmental, the impact on Needham Street.
But you don't regret voting against it?
I don't regret. We know at the time, the vote seemed at the best time, but the people moves forward and that's what we go with. That's the great thing about voting is that the outcome, it went forward, we move on, we have a better project. You know, that's, that's kind of the process.
And real quickly, moving forward, how will both of you make sure this development is a success for the, for the neighborhood of Upper Falls and the city in total? And Gary, maybe you can chime in here?
I think one of the critical pieces of this project going forward is ensuring that this project isn't separate from the village, that there is real connection between Village of Upper Falls and the Northland community that's being built there. So I really feel it's incumbent both on us as members of the village, as well as Northland to help create those connections and make sure that it becomes one community and not two.
But as a councillor, as a, as a
As a councillor, I think it's, it's, you know, a matter of working with Northland to say, like, you know, if, if, say, an arts organization wants to have something on the new village green at Northland, that, that Northland is open to that, that, that we make sure the city doesn't get in the way of, of important events like that and, and that we all try to foster a sense of community and be inclusive. And that's, that's something a city councillor can do.
And Julie, what would you do to make sure this project is a success moving forward for the village and for the community?
I was just checking in with, you know, I'm glad there's still a liaison committee. I think the community wants to be informed if there's any changes. I think a big piece of it is that we have a, a traffic mitigation fund coming from Northland and being able to, you know, set priorities and seeing that that moves forward. I mean, that was a real benefit to have a large number of funds that will support the sidewalks and pathways and green space. And I think that's being able to enforce that through the city council and making sure those happen is probably the most important piece to make sure that those funds are spent as, you know, the, the community sets priorities based on what they want. And the city council can, you know, help enforce that and, and make sure that there's a good communication between the developer businesses that might come in there in the community.
Yeah, thank you. Governor Healy's housing goal for Massachusetts is to build two hundred and twenty-two thousand new units of housing by twenty thirty-five. Do you agree with that goal? If so, what's Newton's responsibility and how would you grade our progress to date? Julie, we'll start with you on this one. Do you think it's a reasonable goal?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it is. I, you know, I don't have all the numbers. I can speak about Newton. I don't know the state. Yes, we're in a housing crisis. Absolutely. I think Newton has done a pretty incredible job so far. Since twenty twenty, we've increased our housing stock. It's been approved, ten percent, more than ten percent. And I think that's important. We have, comes down to three thousand, three hundred and sixty, I don't know, it might be up there, but over, I think thirty, close to thirty-four hundred new units have either been, are been approved, have been built or in the pipeline for Newton. I think that they were doing a good job. Can we do more? Yes, we're looking for new opportunities. But I think people forget that we're, we're building housing, we're through various ways, large projects, small projects.
And, and you said, well, we could do more. What do you mean by that? And do you think we should be doing more if, if we can be doing more?
I think we look for opportunities for affordable, you know, it's just not all building. I think we really focus on the, the affordable, whatever that means, but to find, you know, maybe not increasing it by large, single-family housing, but to, to look for opportunities, whether it's adaptive reuse. I think we're doing, we've done a lot, maybe explore that more. There's just a great project here in Upper Falls that was approved last night. I think in land use for the stone building to adapt a reuse, put six condos in there, excellent use. They're not changing the look or feel of this very historic building. Good use of that. So it's looking for opportunities. I think that's probably where I'd like to see more of. Yeah, I'm, I'm, there's the ADUs, the city approved, we're beyond what the state approved in terms of the size of the ADUs, another good tool to add to housing. So we are doing things. Will they get, to get those going? That'd be great. And that's where I think we'd do more if people start using some of the tools that have been approved. ADUs or adaptive reuse, I think that's
And Gary, Julie painted a pretty good picture of what the city is doing so far to, you know, stem the housing crisis. Would you agree with that assessment? And do you think, do you think we have a responsibility to contribute to the governor's two hundred and twenty-two thousand unit goal or more than we're doing right now?
It, so you asked about a grade. I might give the city a C minus as a grade for, for housing. Where I, you know, I, we talk about approval, approval and actual building of units are totally different things. We hadn't seen that in the Sava Riverside. We are back for another go-around now on that. And I hope it gets approved this, once again, and, and done quickly so we can actually get shovels in the ground there. Julie mentioned the, the stone building on Oak Street being approved last night. That is a project that is in my backyard, literally in my backyard. And I sent a, a letter of support to the city council for that. And so, you know, I, I hope I'm doing my job to, to say yes in my backyard. And, you know, I, you know, we have, we do have a number of things. The ADUs are an important step. The MBTA Communities Act was an important step, but we have to remember that our MBTA Communities Act compliance was a minimal compliance plan. And so far, we have a total of one unit built as a result of that. I think that tells you a lot about how inadequate our response has been. And we need, you know, we need, our village centers still need a lot of work for, to have more residential units in them that can help to create the foot traffic that supports our local businesses. And that's really key. We need to simplify processes in City Hall to streamline the, the, the approval of these projects. And I think we want to, we, we still need to take another look at the zoning. The zoning is too complicated and is an obstacle in many ways to build a new housing in the city. And so, yeah, I, I think we have a lot to do.
And, and you said that the MBTA Communities Act or the plan that Newton passed wasn't enough. So as a councillor, would you support further upzonings if it came down to it?
I would say targeted, you know, I, I would definitely want to take a look at that. I, I think it depends a little bit on where and the circumstances around the upzoning. But, you know, I, I would, you know, I would be generally positive, depending on the, on the circumstance, the exact circumstances of what's being proposed.
And Julie, I'm going to give you a chance to reply to, you know, Gary's assessment as a C minus of what Newton is doing. What are your thoughts on that? And same to you, would you support further upzonings if you think that the the VCOD district, the MBTA Communities District is not doing what it should be doing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm approved that. I'm glad that we were in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. I think that was important in the VCOD. I think we have to wait. I'd love to see it happen a little more quickly. There was a lot of work, a lot of important work went into that. And I, why it's not happening as quickly? Probably for a lot of reasons around the housing cost and interest rates. And there's, it's a more complicated thing. We only can control so much, but I would like to see you know, additional things happen, whether it's, I think we're making progress. I think, I don't know if I graded it, if I could give a grade, but we always want to have a better grade, whether it was a C minus. I don't think so. I think we're doing better. And I think the, I'd love to see more approved. Upzoning? I know there are a couple of villages that were not included in the VCOD and I'd say we'd wait and see on that. You know, not rush. We have things to happen in the existing villages. I think we have to kind of wait and see and hope things financially and financial world move towards supporting some more building.
And so for new ideas for increasing housing production, Julie recently mentioned suggesting a community of tiny houses on a swath of land in Newton possibly. Where do you think this could be possible? And do you have any other new ideas?
That would take a little bit out of context, but you know, that was sort of in a perfect world, that was probably like, wouldn't it be interesting to build a community? But no, that doesn't. The land is, that's not possible here in New, that's, that was sort of, I don't, the land is very scarce here in New, where we can build. And that's why I go back to where, what can we, what's already here? What are properties that could be explored, whether it's city property, because the land is so expensive. So, you know, whatever you build is going to be expensive. So I know the So, you know, whatever we build is going to be expensive. So I know the um. Uh Newton Affordable Housing Trust is looking at some of the city properties throughout to see maybe where we can build affordable housing there. I'm uh, I think that's a great idea because it's what's here. We don't have a lot. We don't have a lot of place to put housing here right now. Um so we can do some some infill here and there. So I would like to see. Adaptive reuse continued, the ADUs pushed a bit more. Um I mean, the West Newton Armory was a a a good example, and we could do these with more public and private partnerships, exploring that. Um you know, it's it's we're somewhat limited here. Um the one thing I I know that, because I'm over on Wells Avenue a lot. You know, is that a place? Is, does it make sense to build something over there, whether it's commercial or residential? I mean, I'm just looking for spaces as I drive around, like where where would we put, you know, and so I don't know. I think that's something to explore. They're given a limited capacity uh where to build.
And I think there was a proposal at one point at Wells Ave for more housing, but it didn't didn't quite get through. Um so would you support housing in Wells Ave, Julie?
Um yeah, I I it's hard to say what what it looked like, you know, like any any project. That comes before me if I'm, you know, elected, I would look at the impact of the community, the impact on traffic, the impact on parking, the environment, flooding, storm. It's hard to say, yes, more housing anywhere in this particular thing without really looking at all the factors. There's some, it's a complicated, it's very nuanced. Um but is it something to explore? Absolutely. Um yeah, but I think it's also to, you know. Yeah, Wells Avenue has a lot of opportunities.
And before we leave housing, um Gary, Julie said, you know, the city council or or the city itself have have limited options to increase our housing stock. Do you think we're uh we're limited and and on the council, would you? Um how would you pursue new ideas for housing and what new ideas do you think you have?
I I think I would say, um. I don't agree that there's that the options are truly limited. I think. Uh we have a lot of options for multifamily housing in the city of Newton. You know, I mentioned Riverside as another big opportunity that I think we really need to push forward. There's. Lots of other places, including places where we can eat ADUs that where we can build multifamily housing. I think we've. Seen over the years that people, including families, are okay with living in a multifamily housing situation. They don't necessarily feel like they have to be confined to just a single-family uh home option. So we have a lot of multifamily uh units here in Upper Falls. Um so I think the really, the the really important thing that has to be driven home here is that we really are living in. A housing crisis here in Newton and in Massachusetts. Uh I have neighbors, one of whom is a doctor at the Brigham. Who are, and he's saying he has to move out of Newton in order to find a house he can. Afford for his growing family. And when when a doctor uh and a nurse who are who are. Looking for a home and a place to live in Newton, say they can't afford it, we really are in trouble. Uh and and I think that's the bottom line for me.
Okay, thank you. Um so switching gears a little bit. Oh, yeah.
Example, because I think there are some good examples of multi-unit of housing as I'm thinking about where to put those conversations. Um in Wobbin, there's a multi-unit one, I think it's condo behind in the Wobbin Square. I think it's perfect. So there are, you know. There are some good examples where you can put multifamily. I think that works really well. Um. It's the, I forgot the the street, but it's behind the Wobbin Market. There is some um multifamily units there that seem like it's right near the transportation. It the impact on the community, I don't know for sure, but I think that's just the the size and the location seem like a good opportunity. Um and just recently down, um just down my street, um and the property that sold. They were um by right, they can put in eight units into this large property. And the developer has chosen to put in sixteen, which I think is great. It's smaller, more affordable units. And the community responded well to that. So I think there are opportunities where you can put it in with the developer working with the community. This was, you know, he out, he did, had outreach to the community and then he held a community meeting. And explained why he could do eight large units for a lot more money, but based on the input from. But he's hearing that smaller, more affordable units. So we're doubling the number of units. I think this is a good thing. So there are some really good examples of where it's working to building.
Uh Matt, can I just quickly, quickly, quickly? We need to be creative uh when it comes to housing and there is, there are a lot of buildings in the city of Newton, for example, old manufacturing buildings that. We really need to look at as places to redevelop. Uh and I and I think uh. Um you know, the the uh the idea of adaptive reuse is a good one. It's just that it's. The amount that we can expect from that is very small. Um I love the Armory Project. It's great. Um but we need to really, I think, going back to zoning, we need to, we need to really look hard at that and and what can be done. With the zoning to open up new opportunities.
Thank you. Um so switching gears a little bit, um what is one attribute of another community that you wish Newton had? Um let's start with Julie here. What's one attribute of another community that you wish, you know, Newton could have in in a hypothetical world?
That's really have another community, another town, is what you're like, so.
Yeah, another town, another city.
That's really, I know this is off, but um Hudson, Mass. I don't know if you've been there. But yeah, it's, do you say you have or you haven't?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you might say I lived there or something. No, it's that community, I think, has done a really um great job of. Um keeping the look and the feel, the downtown community, they have housing around the area. Um there's housing, there's, it's really has. Um a great vibe. There are a lot of independent shops. There's a brewery, there are good restaurants. It's um, it's just a really good, and I've looked to it when I go there for, you know, on occasion with friends. I thought there's something interesting. If there's a Main Street feel to it. And I I don't know what it is, but it, I look around, I thought, why, why, you know, why can't we do something similar in one of our villages? And I don't have all the data, but that just came to mind. It's one of those attributes of. Being able to maintain a lot of independent businesses. I don't think there are any even chains there. I don't know for sure. But it's um a real mix of smaller and larger businesses and restaurants, and they're thriving and they attract a lot of people. And there's parking and there's housing. Um I I'm not sure, but it it has a good, has a real good feel to it.
Thank you. And Gary?
Um so thank you for the surprise question next. But uh I actually recently had the opportunity to spend some time in. In Europe earlier this year and uh I, you know, I walked around and biked around in Amsterdam and Copenhagen and. Some other great cities and and the really, the the thing that I really appreciated about those European cities was. The walkability and the safety uh of the streets. Were just so much greater here and and you could see thriving businesses. That were um driven um by people walking around, uh biking around and getting to them. And there were, it wasn't a lot of traffic. That was the most amazing thing of all. Is that the walkability, bikeability of these cities made the traffic go down dramatically. I never. We didn't run into a single traffic jam while we were there. And the the contrast was really striking.
Okay, thank you. Um. We touched on this a little bit earlier, but Newton has a reputation for being unfriendly to businesses and you guys were touching on regulations. But what specific regulations or practices would you advocate for eliminating or streamlining if you were elected as to the council? Gary?
So we were just talking about zoning and and I think that's a big issue for development. Our zoning code is so complicated and so prescriptive that. Means essentially that the only thing a developer can can, only things that a developer can really reasonably. Create are large developments and McMansions. I haven't talked to really anybody on the campaign trail who likes McMansions, and yet we are forcing. Uh these developers to do teardowns and build McMansions to out to the limits of their of their uh property lines. So we need to take a look at zoning. The there are also processes. You know, I've talked to some local businesses who were talking about setting shop shop and the profits they had to go to. I'd really, really like to see the city put together like a welcome packet. Um that says, welcome to the city. We're glad you're setting up business here. Here's the process that you need to go through. Uh depending on whether you're a retail establishment, whether you're a restaurant or food establishment. And and just helping. To the city, um get their feet on the ground and and get through the process a little quickly. Um you you know, four-month delays because of process are too long for when you're setting up a business, especially when you're, you know, you're running through finance. As a small business, you have limited resources. You know, you need to get business starting to come in the door. So I think that would be the couple of things I would I would talk about. Um just having a welcoming attitude. Um and 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 as a city to people who want to move here, people want to set up business here.
And Julie, what specific regulations would you advocate for eliminating or introduce document items to eliminate or streamline?
Oh, I do have, I think, one. Um. I noticed just from a friend who's was opening a business here, um it's getting a sign, a business sign. That's a really long tedious process. I mean, I think you have to get a account. And then you have to fill out this sign up and then it goes to urban design. And then the urban design, but it has to go two weeks before the urban design group meets. And then maybe it goes to. Inspection services and then it goes to land use, then maybe goes back to inspection services and then maybe go to permit. I don't know, I I might have got the details mixed up. I just know there's a lot of steps. To hang a business sign. Um I would, I think I would eliminate that. I think that could be either streamlined, maybe not eliminate, because you do have to have some oversight. But it could be an administrative review. If you provide good guidelines, I mean, you want someone to hang their shingle up there as quickly as possible, because that. Will let them know you're there and you're open for business. And I I feel like that shouldn't be a a long tedious process to put a sign out. I, you know, there are some guidelines. You'd want it to look like it fits in. Sometimes I wonder if some of the signs I see, if they went through it, but I think that would be my first one. That that's, that would be an easy one to. Let businesses know that we want you out there, we want you advertising yourself. We're not trying to put in administrative or time burdens to.
And it's definitely a tough process to get a sign in the city and it's often a special permit um to get.
Oh, yeah, the special permit, yes, exactly. That's it. It's it's just, it's so much. And I think that's just.
So to both of you, do you think that we should try to? Or do you think that you would pursue getting rid of the special permit for businesses that want new signs? Gary and and Julie, let's start with Gary.
I, you know, I have also heard that from businesses about signs and signage and that process being. Really tough. Um. I, what I think would be an interesting way to get through this is to say signs under a certain size. You can do administratively and then only when you're talking about big, big signs that really. You know, or or neon, really bright signs that that would have to go through a special permit process, but other than that, you know, if it's some something small, you're just putting it on the front of your. Front of your business. Like, why do we care?
And Julie?
Uh yeah, I'm not sure if special permits required and I I echo Gary's unless it's something where it's, you know, it's not the Citco sign coming. It's something that is really large and might have impact on terms of lighting on other businesses or something, but I I think that could be. One area to explore for streamlining. I mean.
In in general, the special permit process, when it comes to development, has been the focus of a lot of. Um a lot of controversy and a lot of people think it's too unwieldy. Gary, you've said you don't want to cut people out of the process, um but want to make the process more streamlined. But it's to streamline the process, it kind of does necessitate decreasing public participation. So how do you square those two things and? How would you streamline the process and would you be willing to, you know, decrease public participation because of that?
Well, I. You know, I I think public input is important and and we have public input. Public input that takes nine months to a year and with with dozens of meetings. Gets to be beyond what we we really need to to have in terms of community input. Um so what I mean by that is say, people should have opportunities to weigh in. Um they shouldn't be endless. And so, you know, we can streamline this process without cutting people out.
Thank you. And Julie, do you think that we need to streamline the special permit process, even if it means decreasing public participation?
I would hope for other ways to decrease um or to streamline it without public participation. I think it's a vital, important, I think it builds trust. I think people like to be informed. They like to have things done with them, you know, to them. Um around development and and the special permit. Um but I think it's also setting expectations and maybe that's where it could be focus of participation. I'm not sure if these people know when they can participate, how much. I think that's part of it to like, all right, we do want to hear from you. We want to hear maybe early, mid, late, whatever it is. I would not sacrifice public participation in it, but really setting expectations at how much. And if there's other ways to streamline. I think the the consequence of reducing that um would not outweigh, you know, I I think that's, it's a trust thing and. Um and they actually, people have good ideas, you know, they they're not there just to, because they have nothing else to do. They're usually there because they they have good ideas and um they want to be heard.
Thank you. Um switching gears again. There was a big, you know, controversy uh this year over the school budget and um the finances of the uh of the city. If an override is introduced in your first term, would you support it? Julie, we'll start with you on this one.
Well, that's a tricky hypothetical one, you know, uh first term. Would I support it? I'd have to, without knowing, you know, I hate to be, I don't want to like avoid, but that's a really hard one to answer without knowing the finances of what's going on. Federally, statewide. Um I don't expect the first term, I really wouldn't. Um I would think. It would be something to explore. Once we have this, uh you know, the new mayor comes in and you know, to thinks about finances. What that looks like, where where there might be some reduction, some reallocation of finances. Um whether we have to just, it's hard to say without giving the um the mayor a chance to set the budget. I I kind of like to wait and see. And if after all that, um you know, maybe, yeah, okay, here.
And Gary, would you support override in your first turn if it was introduced?
So I I think we have to be very real here. Um the city budget, as we've seen, is very tight. Um there there, the opportunities for savings are pretty limited. Um and so, you know, we really have to make a decision as a city, like what path we're gonna take. Uh in terms of the long-term stability of the city budget. Really, the only two options uh over the longer term are tax increases, about two and a half overrides and growth. You know? And so, you know, we have to make a decision fundamentally on what what path we're generally gonna take. I I kind of feel like. You know, there's talk of proper proposition to and a half overrides in the air right now. I really want to avoid them. I know Julie wants to avoid them. A lot of people want to avoid them. I I am concerned that it's. Uh it's baked in right now. We're gonna have to ask. And so if it if it if it comes to that, that we absolutely have to, like in order to make sure we maintain the service levels, including the schools, the roads. And so forth, then I I would say yes, I'd support it. But over the long run, I think growth is the better option.
Okay. Um so that's going on in the real world, but in a hypothetical world. If you could add one new public service or amenity to Newton with unlimited funding, what would it be? So this is not the world we're living in, where we're talking overrides, but um let's start with Gary on this one. With unlimited funding, what would you do?
I I actually really like the idea of a of an arts and culture department. Uh I think that would be a really interesting addition to the city. Um structure, uh city hall structure and and so I think that would be uh something that would be valuable addition to the city.
Enjoy.
Oh, gosh, that's a, that's a good question. Unlimited funding, huh? Maybe um a free shuttle all around. I mean, if that's ever thinking about traffic and transportation, getting people, you know, out of the cars. How about you'd have to figure out. How about, you'd have to figure out what that looks like, but to get from town to transportation hubs, to maybe get to. Um, other villages, to get to, I don't know, but maybe a free, I mean, we have shuttles now and whether it's. Consolidating, expanding, but making that, because we can't quite rely on um the MBTA right now and the green line or the buses as much as we all like. I don't, let's have something, a kind of a, and make it uh um attractive for people to to write on. I don't know what that would look like, but you know, it's hard to change behavior, so if you put something in there, you can't expect them to just jump on board. But I would, whether it's around the marketing or whatever it is, um, wanting it to be attractive. And um something people, appealing for people to get on a shuttle, get around. Um, I think that we, that would be interesting, that might be kind of innovative and um might cost some money though, so unlimited funds, that might be good.
And since we were talking about override. Newton has adopted ambitious climate goals. But those climate goals have come with costs to businesses, especially with some new ordinances, what is your plan to ensure the city meets? Meets our, you know, our our climate goals, but while balancing affordability and growth, um, especially for our businesses who are struggling right now. Um, we'll start with Gary here.
So I assume you're speaking of BERTO, uh, the Buildings Mission Reduction and and Disclosure Ordinance. Um, that was a really important step. I think we need to extend BERTO, at least in terms of reporting requirements, but there's also things that we can do. Uh, I think that can reduce costs and still meet our climate, climate goals. For example. We know that the. Most climate friendly new building is an existing one. Are there ways that we can work with developers to incorporate existing uh structures into their development plans rather than knocking them down? And, you know. There are also multiple changes that we can make uh to, once again, zoning. Uh, and and other regulations to say things like, you know, working at the state level on the building code. Creating single stair for up to six stair, six stories rather than requiring two stair stairways. You know, that helps increase density while lowering costs for developers. And so these are some of the things that I think that would. Uh, help uh help meet our climate goals without necessarily really increasing costs. We need to have a plan, basically, we need to have a plan and 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 we need, the businesses know, need to know that they have to have a plan. And and they need enough lead time to build one that's not gonna break the bank.
And Julie, same question to you, how do we balance this and um, you know, Gary touched on BERTO being a good thing, do you agree with that?
I do, I think it's a first step, I I think, you know, I do, I agree that BERTO is important, um. Important step, you know, whether going to other businesses, it is be a burden and it's such a trade off. This is so tricky around wanting to achieve our climate goals, which we have to. But not to burden the our businesses which we're trying to support, you know, and how do we do that? Is there, are there state, um, federal funds that we can do to support them, um, help them in these costs? If you're going to ask them to do, have more requirements. Um, we need to su- support them in some way, because we'll put them out of business, um, if we put too much on them. So it's maybe looking for some funding, I think it comes down to money around this, we can be creative, but what what funds are available to help? Businesses. Be in compliance with any new regulation and be very careful about how much regulation we are doing, because. Again, it's um, it's it's such a trade off, so it it's a tricky, I think it's a really big challenge right now.
Thank you. And for those following along, BERTO was uh Newton's new ordinance that um compelled property owners to up. Upgrade and decarbonize their buildings um or pay fines and it will come and uh, it will start this year, actually. So we're running out of time, so we're gonna get into our last question. And I told you guys this beforehand, but if you guys could time travel to any one day in world history, just to observe. But not to change anything, which day would you choose and why? We'll start with Julie.
I would choose, for no reason, July fourth seventeen seventy six. Yes, the adoption of the Declaration of Independence. I know it was assigned maybe a month later, a few days later, but really to be in the room and Philadelphia, I mean, that. I mean, I like that, I like history and for me to be in that after all the work to hear, to be the forefathers. Um, to all the risks that they're putting out, to sign that, to adopt it, that we're putting lives and livelihoods. But to to not be, you know, to get away from the tyranny of England and and to really be in three independent colonies. I I think that, aside from being there and seeing, you know, men in wigs, I don't know. But it was just the time um without air conditioning and and just to be in that time, I can't imagine. And I really, that's all the thought that went down and and the fact that it is, it's such an important document over time. Yeah, I I I think that would have been really, I would just love to observe the the debate that went into it, the signatures. Um, and the knowing that they're taking a risk and they're still doing it, so.
Thank you. And Gary, what's your day?
You know, before we started, we joked about picking the same one, but I didn't. So thankfully, I considered that one and I decided no. My date. And and one of the reasons why I decided no on that was because I wanted it to be a full experience that is engaging all my senses. View visually and hearing. So my date is November nineteenth eighteen sixty three. Which is the date that Abraham Lincoln gave the Gettysburg Address. And to me, that's an address that gives me chills uh to this day in its conciseness. And power. Uh, and it's also one that I think is really, really relevant to us. It was really the the beginning of the second founding of our republic. And it was one where Abraham Lincoln called on all of us. To resolve that the government by of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth. And I think now is a time when we need to once again revisit. That speech and that call by a great president. And commit ourselves to our democracy and maintaining and pulling, pushing it forward.
Thank you, and I love two American history answers, so thank you guys for that. Um, so I will give both of you ninety seconds for a closing statement. We're gonna start with Julie on this one, um, so ninety seconds to, you know, tell us what you want to tell us.
All right, um, I'm running for Ward Councilor in Ward Five because I wanna work hard for the residents of of Ward Five. I wanna, you know, I'm someone who shows up, does the homework. Um, and I, you know, I have a history, I've done a lot of work, I've enjoyed it, I want to continue it. I want to be the person that, you know, you go to, I I'm I'm excited to do it, I I love the work, I love talking to residents, I like to listen. And I can really, um, I like to get things done, so I'd love to have, earn your vote on uh November fourth.
Thank you. And Gary?
So my father has been on my mind a lot lately, he's currently in the hospital and not to. Not expected to live more than a few more days. So I wanted to dedicate my last ninety seconds here to give a few words to him. And talk a little bit about the values he instilled in me. He loved to learn and he always stressed the value of a good public education. He loved nature and he vocal, he volunteered on his local trails committee, ensuring that they were accessible. So everyone could share in the parks and enjoy the local environment. He was an entrepreneur and lived the life of a businessman trying to make ends meet. We have too many stories here in Newton about the lack of support local businesses receive in our city. And finally, he loved people and he loved hearing their stories and taught me the value of empathy. It's so important to listen carefully and be able to put yourselves in other people's shoes. We have far too little of that in politics today. So here's to you, Dad. For a life well-lived. And rest assured that I'll carry those values wherever I go. I love you. Thanks you all, I hope you can support me come November fourth.
Thank you, Gary, uh, thank you for that, thank you both for uh your closing statements um and your participation today. Um, a reminder that a recording of this will be in your inboxes and live on our YouTube channel shortly. And on Thursday the twenty fifth, we will be hosting a conversation with all three unopposed city council candidates, the new candidates, so look forward to that, you can register for that on our website. You can also register for Newton Night, our first inaugural uh Newton Small Business Awards um at six thirty um next Wednesday. Um, so tickets are available there. Thank you, everybody, um, for joining us today. Have a good one.